Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Evening, being 6:30. I'd like to call this week's meeting on the Westminster Select Board, Wednesday, April 28, 2021, 6:30 PM to order. Welcome all fellow Westminster citizens as well. Before we move to the adjustments to the agenda, I just want to let the public know that if you wish to speak, please do so and identify yourself with your name clearly, and you'll always have opportunity to address the board. That being said, let's move to the adjustments to the agenda.
I have none.
Acceptance of the minutes.
I'm...
Unagree, accept the minutes as a current.
I second that.
Motion to accept the minutes has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. None minutes accepted. Communication and public comments. Anything? Any public comments? Same none. Moving on to unfinished business. First matter of business, town meetings and articles. Information presented.
In your packet you have a start of facts for each person's articles that they want to read. If you need more or you would like to change stuff, just let me know and I'll work with you those. Figure it out.
Do you know if there are going to be representatives that can, I mean, you know...
Ninety-five percent of them are represented when they are asking for appropriation, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, even also the thirty-five, the town and stuff that came for the town hall, the extra thirty-five thousand dollars, that's...
No one will be there for that.
Okay, so...
Be human and...
Will you?
I'll help, yeah.
Get somewhere, so that...
Yep.
And then is etcetera. Somebody will be there for etcetera, right? I'm just looking at mine.
Sure, take your time.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board regarding their selections?
Again, this is your first look. You've got at least another meeting to give to me to help you out, so give me a call or I'll meet you somewhere or whatever, whatever works for you.
The only thing I would point out, Russ, you happen to know the names of two readers there, so when we read, it doesn't make any sense.
No.
No, okay.
No. The person that submitted the article for us typically, you know, will be the one. You'll just ask and David Major is going to be our moderator, so he'll be asking, you know, is there anyone who would like to speak to the issue? So, as always, there always will be a representative in there.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Okay, moving on. Select Board appointment, interim school board, excuse me, update. Would you like me to address this quickly? And members of the public, on April 21, 2021, this is a notation that we got from our attorney, Larry Slayson. The State Board of Education just passed a motion approving Westminster's withdrawal of the WNU EST, subject to negotiation of Westminster's obligations and approval of the terms of withdrawal by the voters of the towns of Westminster, Athens, and Barak. A specific timeline will be provided by the State Board to reconstitute the town and Westminster School District by July 1, 2021. As a follow-up, Larry Slayson has put forth a suggestion that he and Sean Tui arranged a conference call with the Secretary of State to explain the situation and ask if there is a way to piggyback the town warning and confirm with Westminster that the warning from May 15 meeting had been properly posted and published within the 30-day period, and he will get back to us. We still have not received any other further information. That being said, I wanted to take a brief moment on behalf of the board to thank everyone who put in such hard work, especially Sue Harlow, Russ Hoskins, Larry Slayson, Jack Pryor, Sean Tui, Cheryl Charles, and of course, David Major, who did an outstanding job during the presentation. And if I left anyone else, I do apologize, but that's where we currently stand. Are there any comments? Very good. Some in the public comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to website renewal, sample site.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
Just to start with, in your packet you have a verbiage that you will probably be talking about and perhaps earlier, you know, a little bit of that...
And this is Russell, that's it.
Do you mind if we could call it again, sir? No, by all means.
Yeah.
But I believe, I believe Russ is going to be able to speak, correct? Or is he, is he coming through to the public too or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, just one second, a few minutes to show the work that you've been working on here. We think we reached a point with a little bit of random, we just saved this content, but hopefully we get some acceptance today and be able to hurt putting this out ahead of a busy town meeting, so we can let it do now. So, a few basic principles that we followed here. One is multiple ways to get the things, so things like meeting agendas, meeting minutes, phone numbers. You're going to see that there isn't just one way to get to those. B is as much as possible, a single link from the homepage to be able to get the things. And then just graphics, pictures. We've got a lot in there at the moment, but that would fill up the time.
That sounds tough.
So, on the homepage, you see here, we've got a calendar here on the left-hand side. So, this will be everything from, as you see, select board, development review board, county commissions, all the commission-type events up there, as well as anything else.
Thank you.
As well as anything else, the town meetings and data. Town meeting would actually be here, it's just not, you know, it's down on the list. Latest documents is anything that's been posted, from agendas, packets. You also see some things like applications here as well. The middle space, you know, current news, so major things that a lot of people know about. See, right now we've got COVID-19, the community values that we had earlier this week are going to be a couple of things. Going up into the menu, as we said, our goal here is that as much as possible, easy to find something on the menu and get it to where the normal clerk. So, we start with the government section here. You see town clerk, there's a number of sections, town manager, your different departments and your boards here. And here's a way to get to agendas and minutes, for select board as an example. So, this will have, again, here in the select board agenda, we don't have the full history here, but this would actually be your full history of the agendas. Community, so this is things like your education page, your fire department page, historical society. Again, we don't have the full list built out here, but as we get people's content, it will get built here. Documents and forms, we spend a lot of time trying to group things together instead of the blah that's out there right now. So, these are the categories. You also see, we also have agendas and minutes here, but you see other categories like your animal control or your highway department. So, when you come to those, I forget which ones have information. When you come to those, it's the documents for that section. So, here's documents we've done for the town clerk, very easy to get to.
Are those documents something you can fill out and submit? Where you print it off, bring it in?
They're all different types. Some of them are that, some of them are policies.
Okay.
Documents is a very important, I think.
We discussed a few times what to call that. It's just something like mayor's license, something you can fill out, send in versus print it off, bring it in, hand it in.
Yeah, so hold that up for one second. Yes, hold that up for one second because there is one other thing, we're kind of in the future, that we want to introduce here as well. So, again, these are, you know, your broad stroke categories. Each of these would have anywhere from, you know, four or five documents to the personnel, you have ten different things, you know, policies, shit and stuff like that. Town gallery, this just right now just links to a few different images we've been able to collect, and as we get more, we'll look to post them up there. Contact Us has multitude of ways to contact people. So, we start with our town employees here. Each of the employees has their quote-home page, which is basically who they are, phone number, email, whatever it is, and how to contact them. Your boards and commissions, same thing. Who is making those up, how to contact them. We've also included the social contacts, so where to, where committees have Facebook groups, Instagram, and so forth, we have kind of here a whole quick to get to them. And then we kept the emergency contact information here. If you didn't notice, we also did keep that on the homepage as well. How Can I? So, speaking to exactly what you were saying around the forms, one of the things just this week, we had a conversation around, is exactly what you said, you know, Ross' comment that today, everything is formatted. Some of it is just easy, so the county to get is the form and they can process it, but there is no way to queue that to them. So, what we envision is, as we move forward, how can I? Get trash bags, easy form. I don't even know what needs to be on that right now. I, Russ, could probably comment, you know, I'm assuming it's a payment address. You know, if I were elected member in town hall does it, boom, process it, you don't have to be in the potential. That's kind of our automation vision here for this town.
I'm sorry, it's something of our opinion.
So, you have to work that out. There's definitely different ways to handle that.
That's in the plane, I know what it's like.
On the plane, and that's the day.
Yeah, like for the trash bags. You have a little more now, ten bucks, ten, ten, yeah. We, we don't have right now even a machine to swipe our cards. We have been waiting for this so that we can do it all in one nice sweep. We got pleased by a company that was charging three, three point seven five percent, nothing to us, and was charging the client, the taxpayer, that much more than what his payment was or her payment was. So, we want to change to a local company, get the swiper, and then be able to put it on the website so that people can pay their taxes if they want to online.
I'm not a very techy person, but it's not as simple as it looks.
Yeah. As most of you know, we have a ton of people out of state, a ton.
Yeah.
So, that's really a handy thing for them if they're not being charged, you know, three thousand, three extra thousand dollars for a payment, you know, they're going to do that. The convenience is wicked, so, and you know what the mail's doing right now. We're having an awful time with sending out publications and some people get them, some people don't. It's awful.
Right, and the problem that we have up on the menu is just, you know, some easy information for COVID-19. And the menu, I'll say you can change at any time, but you know, once COVID is away, COVID-19 goes, that goes away in the menu. Maybe there's something else on the top level menu that becomes important. You know, it's not going to go without natural disaster, but you know, natural disaster happens, you put right there on the top, information about how to get help, assistance, you know, that type of thing. And then the other thing, so this is kind of a standard page, if you will, that we would also have for any of the town pages. You see here on the left, we've got the event calendar, and that highlights anywhere where there's an event. So, for example, 14th to 28th is a select board meetings. There's a, well...
And you click on those, excuse me, Russ.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah.
I did actually have today's meeting a little bit further updated, so there's basically anything you want to be able to put in here. We kind of have this set up as a standard. Here's the connection information, date and time, agenda package right here. So, again, and now there are ways to get to your agendas and, you know, ultimately the example. And then there's notice that I want to front manage, those also carry to the various pages again on the left-hand side. So, again, you're easily, quickly seeing that, you know, that quote-unquote news, I tell you about it. And then I can open it up, just leave over to the pages. Fire Department, we've kind of just thrown some content out to here. We have reached out to various boards, historical societies, and yet the content that we currently have updated, but hasn't been changed in quite a while. As we get that, we kind of do this same sort of thing where, you know, maybe image and then text wrapping around, so that it's not just a lot of this information being done.
The number from Mark Long was wrong.
Hey, I copied the site.
No, I think it was wrong there too. I guess I have a permit. I think I have a permit, it's just a whole lot, I think it was something that shouldn't be.
All I'm hoping is that my badge needs to be reviewed. They did. Who would, who would add that information to you?
Right now, well, Russ, right now you are, I mean, that's one thing we're going to have to figure out, is, I mean, Kelly right now, she was stuck on the website. Are we trying to make it easy for her and you to visit or enable audio?
I guess what I'm just thinking is like that calendar, say, that bridge is going to be repaired, no traffic or more, it's going to be covered there, is that who would, who would put that information on, I guess, this morning?
And that's actually a great thing that we hadn't even thought of, the type of thing to be on the calendar, so absolutely, what we want to do is we'll give the different types of events and either have easy automated ways, so for example, select board chair, pick on, pick him up, he can post an event that it's a select board, so designated people. Something that either, I would say, start a party, if you will, maybe that still has to go where the town office to say, here's the something that we want to prepare.
A lot of highway permits have their own Facebook page, they're digging that they're able to do that, to put that information out there, and because changes, oh, it's about a minute, you know, I've got a plan that tomorrow everybody will do that, all of a sudden, the tree falls, you know, everything changed, or somebody calls and says. So, with Facebook, it's a lot easier to manage on our end than it would be to call Kevin and say, hey Kevin, you need to change, you know.
I'm just looking at any way you can get information or something.
No, it's really, whether it's... But that's, that's what I would like to do, is be able to have our Facebook page, you add pictures to it and manage it, just so people can like it or share it and knock on it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The town has a new, we have a new website, and no one can comment on it, it's pretty basic, integration.
You know, right now.
And that's all.
Okay. It should be, it should be the source of innovation here, right? People could all visit the site. We give a lot of money every year for all these articles, whether it's Senior Solution, Westminster Care, they all should be, have a context. So, if you look up and you say, I want a library, we have Butterfield Library, Westminster West Library, and all we're doing is just direct them to an email or a website that they can now go to that, because we're, we're just the engine, we're just driving everybody around, but if somebody moved into town and asked me, I need help, there ought to be a solution where, you know, there's women's anomalies or alcoholics or whatever they are, they're grouped, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what we see in the community apps, so as we get in contact, they can give us content for a failure. That could be their full webpage, it can just be one paragraph or a minute, two minutes. So, absolutely, that's the goal, is if you want to stop shop forever.
If I just moved into town and didn't know you, I'd also have a Facebook page, maybe you should mention it on here somewhere, because this is the first place, if I want to check out another town, I like the information of other towns' websites all the time for different stuff.
And it's right there, so social contacts, so they know.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Yep, perfect.
So, other questions, thoughts?
We'll be working on this continually, so anybody who has any suggestions, ideas, send to us, to Russ and, yeah, there's been a committee, is that, is that good enough?
I'm sorry, what?
You've got another chief from another committee, Ray Dono, Laura Vos, they're working on the body, so, but, so. Yeah, they said we're getting more contact, content, I think that Historical Society is definitely working on something, and it was worth the way it contacted, she's going to say, give us what you have.
Can I just make a plug for Vidit Rie? He's a, I'm a very, well, don't think I'm going to make a plug. So, I'm a very visual person, the director of the council, and I do believe that it adds life to a website, makes it more robust and more fun to visit, and it's a reflection of the entity that it's representing. So, in that vein, I would encourage anybody that has images that represent, you know, their organization in a community way, you know, you provide a service to the community, and you should present yourselves in action. And I would even offer to be the person behind the lens, if anybody is interested in that, because it, for selfish reasons, it gives me an opportunity to get to know my community better. So, I wouldn't mind, you know, seeing anybody in action at work and, you know, clicking away and saying, oh, look at your, you know, the tax solid org or your community members who are making your way to benefit.
That would mean you'd have to work.
But that?
Because that would mean you'd have to work.
Have to go to Facebook and just say, you start there and say, you need help with your community organization, ask you that, if you want to help with...
Yeah, because I mean, I would love to get to know my community better, and I'm looking for more over my life, and I, I don't want people to think about that.
I don't.
I don't want that much of that.
I don't know, I could just chuck drive your car.
I would say chuck it out of my head.
I mean, even if it's something you're supposed to drive, if you're being a vehicle that has like the, I mean, it doesn't have words on it that say Westminster and represent it, or the parking, you sit behind the wheel, and you're just waiting, you're looking down like, that's a good picture?
Make a picture of the highway department.
Yeah, yeah, it's weird. Things to go, I don't think we have to.
Is it a garage? At the truck?
Well, we've got...
Is there a person in the truck?
A lot of contact, a lot of...
The whole?
No, it's...
Well, you know, all, nobody's supposed to drive in Westminster.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so...
Would you really hit the highway department? I mean, you'd be special if they were putting cars...
I guess.
But you'd have to...
I'm pressing it up here, yeah.
I said it several times.
And you can name yourself, I'm pretty sure.
I did it. Oh, yeah.
So, I guess the last question, is this, is this out of the forty, hundred, yeah, that you guys already signed off on it, or work with Ross on the transition, so that , I had it coming, we transitioned, we will re-point the URL that we currently have to this one, so it will be transparent if anyone has it, but you know, town media would be a very responsible, super mental, you know, group. Starting a little wonderful job.
I think I'm, I'm, you should have worked and telegraphed what Ross did, so it's the workload of when we switch over, does that affect Ross and Ross office, I don't know that we're going to...
So, we've done more than this today, and over the next couple of months, we'll just be like that.
You're talking about hosting that, right?
Yeah, changing stuff over.
Yeah, and I mean, that's something we really, we really want to, you know, work out some of that. I think we'd like a vote of approval.
Are there any, are there any concerns with what we're ready to do at the town hall and, correct, so, Russ?
I, we, we've got a lot to do before town meeting, and so I'm not, I'm not sure if that's totally reasonable, that would be completely on, on line yet, but we'll do our best. We updated quite a few policies that needed to be updated, so if we're given tasks, you know, right and regular, then we'll be able to work on them when we have free time, then yeah, we'll try to get it done and...
Yeah, I think we're going to get to that, I think it's just the transition number of hosting, you know, the, the events and stuff.
Yeah.
And it will be no more than this, but...
The objective is to get the long, long man, if we can get things done before town hall break, but priority should make sure that you're ready, that we're ready for the meeting.
Absolutely.
But, I mean, this, to me, looks fantastic. Are there any comments in the public? Any public comment? Okay.
Do you want me to make that motion?
Please.
I move that we approve, approve the new website.
One second. Motion to approve the new website.
Seconded, sorry.
Correct. Motion to approve the new website has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you, Yvette. Okay, moving on to Collaborative Financing Processing Manual update.
We have not done a ton on the manual. We did get Paul to forward us a series of steps that he does take for different things, so we will be putting those in, but in your packet, we have a status update, not a status update, sorry, that's a wrong one, that we have a proposal from Nemrick to add services to us. I have not yet shown this to Paul, he has not been available for this, so I am not asking for a vote of any type now. It will add monies to our budget that is not in our budget, so we've got to plan on that, but that being said, it's, it's got some very solid needs that we have, and it's covering a lot of the, of the missed, missed stuff that I feel that our financial statements don't have right now. So, again, this was more of an FYI, I got it from Cynthia's daughter, and so let's give us some time to talk to Paul about it and have him check off that, yes, this is exactly what I was after, or gosh, I don't think I need this, but I need this, you know, I'd like him to weigh in on it. It's his, it's his, his journal entries, his, his work that, that needs to be enhanced, so, but it's, it's just a good starting point, and I'm very appreciative that it came so quickly, it was great timing.
James?
Can you define, well, time rate, is that, is that hourly rate?
Yes, yep, that's where we're at now. Some months it takes more than others when you end it, you end the quarter or you end the year, those take some serious time.
I did have one question on this, and this looks very good. This is from Cynthia, right?
Cynthia, yeah.
Okay, Cynthia, my fault. If fifteen thousand had allocated towards financial assistance, this would be separate and beyond that?
If we, we could, we could use it because it will be some, two tutorials in this process, so we can use some of that monies, but in F... So we can use some of that monies, um, but in FY twenty-two, if we dropped it to seventy-five hundred, which will cover the lion's share of this.
Okay.
Um, but right now, uh, that fifteen thousand, we really didn't, we don't have a person to send to class. So we want to make sure that we're not sinking all our, our efforts into a, a person that's not going to stay long term. And I don't mean Paul, I mean, uh, an assistant, uh, that he'll need. So it's a work in progress. I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. We've just got to keep going, so.
Cynthia regarding this particular memo yet or?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, did she let you know when she wanted to address us? It says here in the back, and she did want to address the board.
When, well, I, I told her, I, I really want to run by Paul.
Great.
Because he might have some more, um, more need or, or less need or whatever. I, I just want to go around him when it's, it's his, truly his.
Okay, you already, you already said that, and I'm sorry.
Yep, no.
I just want to be clear. Any other comments from the board on this issue? About public, public comment on the finance processing manual?
Hey Kevin, it's Cynthia. I am here. I just want to, the other thing I can do too is some of the stuff that's on that proposal is stuff that we already do as part of our contract, monthly contract. So for the next meeting or whenever I hear from Russ as to when he wants us to maybe come to the board if you have questions, I can let you know how much you've, you spend a year annually on us for what we already do.
Great.
So, you know, the, 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 at the, I mean, it's an estimate, fifteen thousand is an estimate. Some night, some months it would be less, hours per month, some months it might be a little bit more. But, um, I can tell you like on a monthly basis what you're paying now for what Darlene does. So this is kind of just a supplement to that.
Terrific, and, uh, thank you very much for assembling it and, uh, again, all you're doing.
Yeah, Russ, you just let us know if you want us to come to a meeting. Darlene can come as well.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Any further public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to town land off Pineback Road update.
Since we've met last, um, I came and got signatures from you all. Um, we missed a document and I, I say we, legal counsel missed a document that, um, needed to be placed, um, posted and placed in the newspaper for thirty days prior to the completion of the sale of, um, any town lands. And so anyway, we're in the process. We have a closing date. We backed it off to, uh, uh, the end of, of, uh, May. Um, so it's still on, but it's, it's on hold until the thirty days goes by and then we can actually sign it over. But they're very interested and they have the money in hand, so we're, we're very excited about to get it off our plate.
Wonderful. Any comments from the board? Public comment? Seeing none, moving on to town land off Davidson Hill update.
Um, in talking with Larry Slayson, we have two options and I'd say we do have two options. Um, we can do this in an auction form such as a, as we do a tax sale where we, um, we advertise it. We have folks come to, uh, a location and actually bid on it and they, it's a live auction. So it's, you know, ba-da-ba-da-ba-da, back and, back and forth and you get to a higher price. Um, we could cover, uh, a lot more of our, our out of pocket, um, doing that, that way. Or if you're not into that, we can do a flat rate sale, meaning it's advertised. We have a minimum you guys have, have placed on it is five thousand dollars and put it out to bid. And people bid anything over or at five thousand dollars. And it's done by the highest proposal. So it's up to you which way you go. Um, we, we know we have some serious expense into that piece of land. Chuck did a great job of, of cleaning it up and filling it, making it a, a very attractive site now, uh, very saleable. I mean, it really has got some, some potential. And, uh, we have three or four people that are very interested. So, um, it's up to you folks. You, you, and I, I, I want to know now sooner than later because it's spring and people really want to get started on, on projects and we don't need to own it anymore. It's, we get it off the.
And the town manager's recommendation would be which methodology?
I honestly think we, we would make out better with the, the auction where you have three or four people bidding against each other. And, and literally, it might not only be but a few dollars, but it's better than, than not. So, uh, advertise it just like a tax sale and, and get all the, the, um, the heavy hitters out there. And, and we might end up with three or four more bidders than we thought we had. So that's what I would recommend, but again, I'm willing to do either one.
That's maybe faster then.
You'll know that day, absolutely will. And they will, they will have to have cash in pocket, um, cashier's check or, or, um, cash, so. I need a, I need a motion.
I just want to make sure, are there any other, are there any other ideas given that? Is there any other, anyone think there's a different idea that might be better?
What would that, tail roll? I'm going to group together like that in an actual auction where we can even have the whole town meeting. How are you going to have an auction?
We'd have it in a big room like this, um, and, uh, spread out. And, um, Larry Slayson would, would be the auctioneer and just like we do, we're going to do on tax sale. We're going to do that in July, so.
We're not talking about.
They could call in, they, I guess, they could be on call, but, uh, again, they would have to have somebody in, in-house to have, have it on their phone. Because if, um, you know, as the bid goes up, they, they want to be able to be proactive. So it's going to behoove them to get, get, get their presence in the room. And they also going to have to pay for it. That's the other thing is they're going to have to.
Any public comment? Any public comment?
I do.
And you are?
Nate Stoddard.
Oh, I did. Uh, go ahead.
Um, so just a clarification. I, I think at the last meeting, we heard that this is the property that our road crew cleaned up. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we own this property?
That's correct.
Well, I was not aware of that, but I, I also was under the understanding that we cleaned it up, but our road crew's time was going to be reimbursed through an estate, I thought I heard.
Uh, that's, that's the wrong property. That, that's the Bill Lyons property where we had an emergency health order.
Okay, my bad.
This is the Davidson Hill property where we bought it at tax sale because it, there was no other bidders. And we had a, um, a hazard with an old trailer that had been literally stripped. And whatever they didn't want, they threw over the bank into the woods. So we literally cleaned it all up and turned it back into a, a decent lot.
Thanks for the clarification.
No problem.
Anything else from a public comment that you made? Any other public comment? Okay, I'll understand a motion at this time.
Right, I still move that we, uh, we, uh, adopt the, the.
Auction.
The auction process.
Second.
Motion, uh, to adopt an auction for the town land off Davidson Hill Road has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to third quarter financials, questions?
Just not to drop the ball, um, because I gave it to you and then, um, we, uh, had some other questions. So I wanted to make sure that we got them all answered. So, um, this is my sheet that I took notes on at the meeting. That's why I've got my name on it. And I'm sorry about that, but, um, I wanted you to know what we talked about. So the line item that I wrote doubled, it was doubled. We, um, have corrected that. That is a forty thousand dollar grant, not a eighty. On page two, the twenty-two thousand, um, has miscellaneous revenue that, um, Paul was unsure of. And, um, we've been told by, by Nemrick and, and, um, our accountant that when you're in doubt, put it in miscellaneous and we can always, um, correct it at a later date, which we do have to have, uh, some corrections. There's, um, some workman comp, um, uh, processes in there. There is, uh, there's Gary Grail in there. There's, um, uh, tax sale adjustments in there. So anyway, long story short, some of it is, is legit, some of it is not. So we will get that corrected. Uh, page three, we did, uh, we do have, um, Chad, um, Chad's cost that, that it should have been in there. And we, we've adjusted that. It's on page three. Um, and I think that's all you have, unless you have more.
Um, just a quick, so you said you do have Chad's cost in there. Do we know what that is?
Uh, it's four hundred and eighty dollars or something like that.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Hey Russ, one more time, and I know this is not the time to address it all, but I still, there's too many years I've been on here. This is simply more confusing. On page, uh, what is the page number? They're up at the top, uh, right hand, page six. They were, we start out and weigh this and then instead of this, we break it all up and hint mathematically following. And same under where it's got, uh, the equipment, it's got, we did repair it fifty-eight, but you can't even add it up. Then you have to go through it and just, I don't think it means anything for us to know that truck bites four, three. Nobody knows what they even are. We're more looking at repairs at fifty-eight. Where are we on that line? Is there any way that down the road, you could just do away with those breakdowns and stay? If it's a line item, stay as a line item, don't break it back down again?
Well, let's, let's just take that, um, the gas, fuel and oil for, for an example. Um, you look at the bottom line of that, the totals, which is on the next page, page seven. And you look at it and you say, okay, well, the gas, fuel and oil is, we've spent fifty thousand dollars so far out of the eighty-two. So literally you do the math and you, then you could do and say, oh, we're right where we should be with, with repairing cars to the, the year and date. I can't guesstimate what truck number one is going to be, but it tells Chuck substantially to know that Chuck, um, truck number one, um, has X amount of dollars spent on it this year. When, especially when it gets down to, as you know, down to when you're trading.
But that, that could be a report for just him as a select board. If we just, if we do repairs and it's fifty-eight, it falls through, we spent ten, you got forty-seven. If you're saying words, the rest, we gotta add it all up and go to the last page. Doesn't really mean anything more than because we didn't, like you said, you, you can't guess at it, so you didn't put it there. You see what I'm saying?
I, I, I hear you. This is the status report that, that it's generated through Nemrick. Yeah, I can, uh, literally, uh, hide those, those, um, specific, uh, details and give you just the total. And you just, your, um, report, okay, I can do that. I mean, I, thanks. This is, this is pretty hopeful though, literally to know.
Right, it, it is, but it really is a select order. And I probably know more than most of them here. I, I, I'm thinking, what is truck number five, six or seven? I don't know which ones they are. So it doesn't mean a lot. All I looked at was what is the budget for maintenance and where are we on that line?
You know, so I can do that. Right.
Any comments or questions?
Kevin, it's the clerk.
I'm sorry? Oh, I said, go ahead.
No, it's Millie Harry.
Oh, hi, Millie.
Can I just ask what the page three Chad's cost? I can't understand.
Which page, Millie?
Higher items, someone said Chad's cost or something. I don't.
Oh, yeah, that was, uh, page three?
Uh, no, Chad's.
Was that three or thirteen?
Oh, yeah, page three, I'm sorry.
What is that?
Under finance training. Finance training on page three, um, we charged, uh, some meeting, we, we met with Chad and we paid him and so, uh, that's the item that falls under.
So the, the four hundred and fifty dollars, so we just take four hundred and fifty out of.
One hundred and eighty dollars.
Four hundred and eighty dollars.
It, it plus or minus, I, that's just off my head, okay.
I don't have a packet and the, and the sound quality is not.
I can help you with that, Millie. This is Russ.
Millie?
I'm all set, Kevin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no other questions from the board, any questions from public, public comment? Sure.
I don't have the problem, I don't have a real price, but, um, I would hate for you guys to lose any detail because somebody might want to use that one.
Yeah, I agree.
Russ, when you go through that, well, do you go through that for, like, what needs a custom is making more work for you? Or is it something that you could do as a part of the floor? Anyway.
It, it's not a lot of work. I, I can, but it is a step that I have to literally hide those items so that then I print out the report and then I'll bring them back because they're very important to Chuck and I, we do it monthly.
I haven't seen a report and it's, it's, well, I may be way off base here, but, you know, I'd be good. I don't know what kind of printer you use to print it on. Is it, is it color printer or is it black and white?
It's a color printer, but we use it black and white.
Okay, okay, there's something.
It just looks like this.
Like, is it in color code? Can you highlight or in bold?
I can literally do the.
Can you see twenty-one percent easily, but what that one is going to be?
I can literally give him the totals on, on the slide board copy. I can give them the totals in that line item and just hide the, the details for it.
I was trying to say that it didn't have a word.
Yeah, I, it's just a step. I can do it.
All right.
It's nothing that has to do with.
Thank you for the suggestion. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, Hartley Hill Private Road Section, quick claim deed, Robert Whitburn.
Hello?
Yes.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, hello, I'm Robert Whitburn. I live on the section of Hartley Hill that lies Queen Town Highway fifteen and Town Highway thirty-one, otherwise known as the private section. Um, there's been a lot of discussion over the years over this section. Um, the town has at times expressed an interest in taking it over, but is not willing to spend anything to do so, which I certainly don't blame you. Um, so about a month ago, I was coming up the Saxon's Riverside of the Hill, Town Highway fifteen, and I was following a truck that had FedEx labels all over it. Well, as it turns out, when all was said and done, um, this person was, had come to deliver a package to my, across the street neighbor, Nick and Dale. But, um, coming down the hill and stopping that FedEx truck was Steve Peluski, who's the caretaker of the estate of Todd Hill. And he proceeded to tell the FedEx driver, you can't go over this hill, it's a private road. Well, so that got me to, back to something I've done in the past, which is doing some research over who actually owns this private road. Because Steve Peluski, who's the caretaker for the estate, clearly believes that Robert Bonds does. Well, I don't. I've come to the town hall in the past. I've read every deed that conveyed property to Mr. Bonds. I've read every deed that conveyed property to Joe Walz, who is pretty much who Bonds bought most of his property from. And I find no reference at all to the, to the private road itself actually being conveyed. Back in the late nineteen seventies, um, Tony Sirsasimo of, of Sirsasimo Industries down Browlboro bought the property from a community farms who was attempting to farm it. And he subdivided it and there are various subdivision maps, um, that you can see. And, but it basically divided it all into lots. Now, he drove stakes down both sides of the road and all of the properties referenced the stakes that are on their own side of the road. So, so nowhere do I see conveyed this property to Mr. Bond. So that's thing number one. Um, number two, um, Russ Hodgkins gave me, um, access to the files that the town has on the correspondence that has gone back and forth over the years about this road. In two thousand and five, the town. In two thousand and five, the town sent letters to everybody who was in a butter to that private road, and I, I asked Russ to distribute one of the, a copy of one of those letters to each of you this evening, so you should have it, and, and all of the letters read and, and the only difference is who it was addressed to. This particular one was addressed to Jeffrey Morse, who is the attorney for Sirsasimo. And in this letter, the town asks, would you be willing to sign a quit claim deed to give whatever right you have to this road over the, presumably if everyone they sent this letter to had returned it signed, the town would have gone ahead, would have known that they were not going to have any opposition to taking over the road and they would have gone ahead and done it. Well, Mr. Bonds did not return his letter, everybody else did and they all signed it in the affirmative. Um, the one thing that I really wasn't aware of fifteen years ago is that they had also sent one of these letters to Mr. Sirsasimo. Um, and I was surprised to find that, in fact, Jeff Morse did sign it. Well, my suggestion to the town is that it would be in the town's best interest if, if Sirsasimo was willing to, to basically give the town a deed to that road, it would be in the town's best interest to go to, to Mr. Morse and say, are you still willing to do that? And if so, actually stick a deed under his nose and say, here, sign here. Now, clearly somebody's got to draw up this deed before it could be signed, and, and what I said to Mr. Hodgkins a few days ago, and I'll say to the board now, is I'm willing to pay for that, because I'm tired of Steve Peluski bullying people who are driving over that road, including my son, for instance. Um, so I would like to move forward on, on, on nailing down exactly who's, who owns this road. I don't believe that Bonds does, Bonds believes he does, does, I think. One way to move forward on this would be just to get a quit claim deed signed, because then we could just send a letter to Mr. Bonds and say, we have here a quit claim deed that says, we now own it. What do you say about that, you know? So that's my suggestion to the town, and that's the principal reason I'm here tonight. Um, the one, one other document that I had Russ include in your packet was one of the deeds to the land at the top of the hill, and that deed is from, well, it's basically, okay, it's selling the property to Joe Walsh, who was the first person who bought it after it was subdivided. And what you'll see if you go about halfway down the page, it says, also conveying to the grantors herein, there are errors and assigns in connection with the parcel, here in, here and above describe a right of way running between Town Highway thirty-one and fifty-one, so, or fifteen and fifty-one. So here's the point, if you look at this deed, if you look at every deed that Bonds has, they all have the same language, they all say, you have a right of way. They don't say, you own it. Well, if, if in this case Dutch West Industries had sold Joe Walsh the actual road and not just a right of way across it, why, why would they bother to put this right of way language in the deed? So I'm presenting this as at least a modicum of evidence that Bonds does not own the property that he thinks he does. Um, because I'm willing to pay for it, it would cost the town nothing to go to Jeff Morse and say, would you be willing to sign this quit claim deed? And if he's willing to do it, I'll pay for it, just, we'll have it drawn up, we'll have him sign it, and then we can decide where we want to go from there. I mean, one of my concerns is that if in the process of doing this research, and, and after I've done enough research on my own, I'm taking this to my lawyer and seeing what we can do to press this issue, um, if in that process Bonds finds out he doesn't own the property, he may try to gain that ownership. He may go back to Sirsasimo and say, I'm willing to buy it from you, and, and that's what I don't want to happen. So if we, the town, could go there first and get title to that property, then that would preclude Sirsasimo from selling it to somebody else. So, so that's my recommendation to the town is that, is that we go ahead and have that, ask Morse whether he's still willing to sign that quit claim deed, and if the answer is yes, then let's do it. Um, so that, that's what I have to say.
Mr. Whitburn, uh, want to thank you for your time, consideration, and, uh, effort and a clear, concise, and, you know, clear and concise synopsis of where you think we stand. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, board input?
Well, this document, signed by Jeffrey Morse, two thousand and five, agreed to ex you, this is not what you're talking about, Bob, whatever they would interest them to have in Hartley Hill Road, so this seems to be what you asked to be signed in two thousand and five.
No, 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 this is just a letter to him saying, would you sign a quit claim deed if one was presented to you?
Yeah, but what is this thing at the bottom?
Wow.
That is the thing at the bottom. Morse says in two thousand and five that if we gave him a quit claim deed to sign, he would sign it. And the question, but then what never happened is, the town never did go to him with a quit claim deed and ask for him to sign it, even though he said he would be willing to. So the question is, is he still willing?
He was not at the time. I was on the board, I actually was involved, I know Sirsasimo real well. Uh, we tried, we spent some money that year trying to get that property, cause it turned into a real nightmare. We went back and did a lot of research, and what we were guessing that, when they sold all the property, instead of going down the middle of the road, they only went to the side. So we got all done saying, well, technically Sirsasimo would still own the road, because instead of settling the path, and, you know, they, they left the road and nobody took, so we went back, we tried to prove it, we, we went to him at the last minute, Tony was still alive and was not alive anymore, but, they didn't want to sign it because they couldn't prove that they actually still owned it, nobody could prove who owned it. It was just a, an error. I know we spent money trying doing it, uh, but I know, I guess if you want to spend money and try it again, uh, you.
Craig, I have read Russ's file that has all the correspondence, in theory has all the correspondence that's gone back and forth between all parties about this particular thing, and I find no reference to anything like that. I, I would, I would like this to proceed on the basis of what can be proven. There's an awful lot of hearsay about this whole issue, but I can't find any documentation to back that up. If you have, if you have board minutes or anything like that, that you can produce that show that this is in fact the case, I would love to read them. But right now, from what I can tell, it never went any further than this letter. So I don't see the harm in asking them. Now, the thing about a quit claim deed is, it doesn't really bind Sirsasimo to anything. So there's really no reason for him to refuse to sign it. If it was a warranty deed, I could understand, because if it was a warranty deed and it was proven that there was something wrong with it, then he could find himself having to defend it in court, having to pay for a survey to be done, or something like that. But a quit claim deed doesn't do any of that. All a quit claim deed says is, whatever title I have, I'm giving you. I don't see any reason why he would refuse to do that. And I haven't seen anything in the town's files to suggest that he has refused to do that. If you can prove me wrong, fine, I'll go away. But
I have a question.
I've read everything I can see, and it's not the case.
Thank you, Robert.
Robert, you have, uh, you had some other documents which I might not, um, looked into. What did Baldini, uh, lawyer come up with? I know he spent, spent some, some money on his own, what was that finding to back?
Well, yeah, I'm, I have talked to Baldini once, unfortunately, he's undergoing cancer treatment right now, and he's really not interested in, in having a substantive discussion about this issue. Um, back when he did, he, he did sink a little bit of money, and I think it was Tony Kissel was his attorney and, and, or, or Ray Masuko, sorry. Um, I have not gone to Ray and asked him. I, I know what Ray did was he wrote a letter to the town suggesting that because the town had maintained it for so long, they might have a legal obligation to keep doing it. But that's not really the angle that I'm trying to pursue here. This angle is, is different. I'm not aware, I, I can go to Tony and ask him, or, or I'm sorry, I can go to Ray Masuko and ask him, I'm not sure how much I can get out of him without actually paying him, but, um, but really, Mr. Baldini didn't have a whole lot to tell me. It was too long ago, um, for him to really remember, and he's got other, much more pressing issues with his health right now, so that, that inquiry kind of died.
So, do you remember why he did not have to sign?
A little bit, I remember we verbally talked to him.
Yeah.
And he'd be willing to sign, but he didn't know whether he owned it or not. So he actually asked his attorney to look at it, nobody could prove, we were going to send Ebonado up there to even try to survey it, because we were desperate to try to buy it, because we, they were putting the gate up, and we were going, we gotta do something about it. And we spent money and time and it wasn't that Tony at the time was against it, he just, I don't know, I don't think I owned it. And there was nobody could a hundred percent prove that he still did, so we were thinking that, well, he'd be excited because he'd end up landing, he, then knew he owned, and with him, it's only the body from it. But he couldn't prove it. I mean, just, Bob wants to pursue it, but, you know, I know we tried several times to buy it, or do whatever we could to keep it, but at least, we kind of get down to the point where at least he's not putting a gate across the road to stop it from going through, because he never felt on the other end that he had a legal right to do that every time he threatened it.
If there, if, for any of us ever, um, there's something called eminent domain, is a town needed, you know, that is an important place for the trucks to go back and forth. And I'm just curious if that, if there's a way that he can get the town to own the road.
And he, the, the argument was that he'd never, we've never pressed that, that I've read.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't see it.
We did, we did back then, but the argument was that only, you never gave them permission. Someone gives you permission to go over the road, and after a while, you're just now in the domain you have. This point was, like, basically, you get down there, you're saying, well, I never gave you permission to go across the road, but the gate, we got to a point, I remember, where we thought, well, maybe we just dug a hole, because we didn't know we legally could stop them from putting the gate across that road, you know?
Maybe we should just, yes.
So who's?
Dan, your question?
Sorry.
Hey, John.
Who's paying taxes on this road? If, if Bonds doesn't own it, and Sirsasimo don't know who owns it, and you do all the math, and everybody on both sides of the road has got their property and they're paying taxes, who's paying taxes on the road?
In the tax map, it does not show that that road is, uh, a delineated road where nobody pays taxes on it. The, the, a butter's come right together and you.
No, they don't. Russ, Russ, that's not true. Russ, that is not true. Uh, here, I can show you a page, let's see. Um, no, I can't, I don't have the right map. If, if you look at the, at the subdivision map, there's, there's all these lots, but then there's this strip of land down the middle that says private road. Um, the answer to the question of who's paying taxes is no one, because, because that acreage is, is, it, it's a fair, apparently fairly common in Westminster that if you have a subdivision and there's an identified private road, the private road itself doesn't get taxed, all of the lots along the road get taxed, but the acreage of the actual road, I thought that was a little unusual too, but that is in fact the case. If you look at, at the subdivision map, you'll see that there's this thing called the road, and it's not part of any of the lots. The lots do not meet in the middle of the road, the lots do not meet on one side of the road, the lots do not meet. Parcel A on one side of the road and parcel B on the other side of the road are twenty-five feet apart from each other. There are states driven to identify the corners of the lots down both sides of the road. Um, to address Toby's question of couldn't the town just eminent domain it, the answer is of course they could. Um, the way, um, Glenn Smith explained it to me was that the town was willing to take over the road as long as it didn't cost them anything to do it. So that was why they sent these letters out, because they wanted everybody on the road to say, I'm willing to give up the road. But because Bonds was the one and only person who did not return the letter, the town dropped it at that point. The reason that nobody ever presented Sirsasimo with that actual quit claim deed was the same reason they didn't present me with one, and they didn't present, um, would have been Neil Madow with one, or Don Baldini, because it didn't make any sense to draw up a bunch of deeds that only gave the town rights to half of the road. If they didn't get the Bonds portion, there was no sense in going forward, so the town didn't go forward, and, and that makes perfect sense to me. But, but I think, I, I think that, as, that we don't need everybody to go forward. The only person, the only two people who could possibly own that road would be Sirsasimo or Bonds. And to get one of these deeds, when I'm willing to pay for the deed to be drawn up from Sirsasimo is a no-brainer to me. There's no reason not, for the town to not do it. It's not going to cost you anything. So why not ask?
There's a lot of stuff here that needs to be figured out, um, and I don't think we can do it right now with the information that we have.
Well, I think.
I think it's worth pursuing. I think it's worth pursuing, I would say.
You gotta do a little more research, because what you're saying, right, is Bob, is, is what we didn't decide, we were a hundred percent sure that the land never, that, that road didn't, just like you said, the properties ended before the road, the road actually belonged to somebody, but when we were serving, somewhere along the line, we got a letter back to Bonds threatening us that if we were to, to try, try to put a covert in, so then we had to go back to the attorney, we're having some more research, saying, well, we have a right to do this maintenance, because he wouldn't let us maintain the road because he was so afraid that we would fix it up, and he didn't want it passable, especially in the winter time. So I know he sent us a letter from his attorney one time saying we weren't to able to do any repairs, and we went back after him and said, we won't fix the road up, but we will keep it passable. And it wasn't in two thousand and five, it was a few years later. So I think, just make sure we do a little more research. Uh, it isn't that we didn't try, like, unbelievable, last, last time doing it too. We just couldn't get our hands on something, says that we had a hundred percent proof that that road was available to, to Sirsasimo. But Bob, I, I'm not for you stopping and trying to do research as for so.
I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd like to know what sort of research the town is going to require in order to take some action on this.
That's a good, that's a good question, Bob. If I may just say.
Say it again, you don't have to have a proven title to a property to write a quit claim deed, because all a quit claim deed is, says is, if I have title to this property, I'm giving it to you. If I don't, you got nothing. Um, it doesn't cost anybody, I mean, it's going to cost me something to have it drawn up, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't bind, it binds Sirsasimo to not sell it to anybody else, but it doesn't, he doesn't, in, in a warranty deed, he would be promising to defend that deed. With a quit claim deed, you don't do that. A quit claim deed is just, yeah, sure, if it's mine, it's yours. That's all it says.
Okay.
So I don't see any reason why we would need to do a lot of research before we ask for the quit claim deed.
Okay.
But if the town's not willing, okay.
Well, we didn't say that. Um, was there ever legal opinion sought, uh, do we know in that file, um, regarding our, uh, obligations as a town, when Glenn was the manager, Russ, or is there anything in there that came from any, that came from our attorney, whoever it was at the time?
There is, and I, but I have not obtained that file in our construction, um, it was removed, and I have some documents, but I'm going to, with your permission, call Larry and get it, um, resurrected that way, instead of trying to.
your permission, call Larry and get it resurrected that way, instead of trying to dig through a job trailer.
My, my main concern is, we were, we were spending some time trying to back that up, because we were really worried that that person actually did have a right to put a gate up on his property and stop the road. So then we were trying to renegotiate again, that like, okay, until we can prove that we can fix this, they, they might have a right to put a gate on his property to stop people from going through. That's my opinion.
So Bob, what we, what, what I want to make the assumption is, is it reasonable to assume that we should, we should certainly research our file and see exactly what we have in the way of providence?
Sure, yeah.
See if we in fact can proceed to accomplish what we were all trying to accomplish. Does that make, is that reasonable, Bob?
Yeah.
So why don't you, why don't we set this back to the agenda for the 14th? And by that time, we will have done a little bit more research, and we can discuss it again then. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Terrific. And again, thank you for all your hard work and input on this, on this matter, and we will review it, and then we'll discuss it again in two weeks.
I do have one more postscript I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
Which is, if you read the Westminster Gazette, it says the following. Feel free, if you have the need, to make an appointment with either the town manager, zoning administrator, or town clerk after or before normal business hours. Both offices are willing to make those arrangements with you if needed. Well, I have obviously had to do some research and read deeds in order to do what I'm doing, and I asked the town clerk if I could come in late, and she said, we close at four. And I said, the Westminster Gazette says you're willing to stay open, and she said, okay, I'll do this once. So I've used my once. So I just want you to be aware that what's being said in the Gazette, which is that the town clerk is willing to work to come to stay late for, for people who work out of town, is not true. And, 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 and I've asked a number of times about this, but I really think that the town hall should be open, and I know technically you're not open or whatever, but I really think that, that the, that the town hall hours ought to go until at least five o'clock one night of the week, so that not only me, but anybody who works out of town and can't get there by four o'clock, has a fighting chance of getting there. Food for thought.
Thank you, Bob, and we will definitely take the under advisement and discuss that opposed case.
Okay. Well, thanks for your attention. Back to my grid game.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment?
I was just thinking about this. I wonder if we've got a history of ever sending a tax bill to Sir Sossimo if they ever owned it? Because if we're going to ask them to sign a quick claim deed, at one point, they must have gotten a tax bill. So that would prove that, yes, in fact, they did it one time on the road. Well, being decided that they own, that he owns the road, that's why you're asking for a quick claim deed. That's why Mr. Wicker is asking for a quick claim deed. So that would prove that, in fact, they did it, or do it on it. And if they did, then we stop sending them a tax bill.
And that's an excellent point also, that's why we need to look at our providence and see what we've got, goes back and forth, and find out what we have, if we have anything. Good point, thank you. Any other comments?
What about the hour? I know other towns do the surveys, wow, they don't have that, but in my previous life, they did, you know? Once a week, having an evening hour, so you're not increasing the hours overall, you know, you're not changing your fiscal.
There's no overtime.
There's no overtime, there's no extra hours, it's just you're changing when people work. And it can be, and you make this your own, you know, you do, you, and if you sign, is it once a week? Is it once a year? Is it once a month? Just to operate it all would be such a huge help.
We did discuss it with previous town clerks. Yeah, I think we did discuss with previous town clerks, because there had been requests, it didn't happen, but, you know, we have a new town clerk now, so maybe we can.
Yeah, and that would be not launching her putting more hours.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's just like, and, and if she picks the date, so that, that, you know, that's more likely to be, you know, accepted as a thing.
Thank you.
My turn.
Delinquent rescue plan act.
You actually asked for that to be on there, and I gave you a, another document that the VLCT and the state of Vermont has put together with guidance from the state, the federal government, excuse me, and it's still early. It is a work in progress. The state has received some of these monies, but have not released them yet, and they're still working on how to release them and what stipulations they're going to put with them how to spend it. There's pockets of money, and I told you last meeting, that there's three pockets of, of interest, and it's, you know, divided amongst that, and we were supposed to, and it's still possible to get a, a small payment before the end, before June 30th, before the end of June. So information's got to come, it's going to come fast, and it's going to come from the, from VLCT, and when the regional commission are all on board and, and ready to help towns when it, when it is, the news is broke, so.
Great.
I'll keep you in the loop.
Please keep everyone informed, and thank you for doing that. Delinquent tax forgiveness.
Every year, we have the dollar, $2, $3, and most of the time, it's, it's in the translation of what they owe and the timing of when they pay. Typically, we have in the past forgave anything under $10. I just took the time to write down how many are under $5, there's 19 of them, and there's only two that are under $10, for a whopping $39, $40 and change. I would recommend that you do what you have done in the past, is forgive anything under $10 for delinquent taxes.
Thank you. The move?
Yeah.
No, second.
Toby?
Motion to forgive the delinquent tax forgiveness, or the delinquent tax forgiveness per total of 39, excuse me. I make sure I got the math right, actually, $40.
It's $40 and change, but don't do the, the, just, just.
No problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's your care?
Great, thank you.
Reappoint DV fiber Deerfield Valley Communication Union District representative and alternate.
We are a little tardy in this, but Susan, excuse me, Lisa Colby and Mike Oster have been our appointees, Lisa is our representative, and Mike is our alternate, and I was the second alternate to our Deerfield Valley Communications Union District, and this is all about getting reliable internet to all of our taxpayers. So both of those folks are interested in keeping their positions, and I would recommend that you do so. In your, in front of you, Kevin, you have, have the actual document, if it does pass, that we would sign that and get it back to Deerfield Valley Communications, so that we are represented by those folks.
Have you a president or?
I don't know that. Lisa? They are not.
And both Lisa and Mike?
I have talked to both of them, and they're both been very active and very good for the town of Westminster.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, you do.
I move that we reappoint Mike.
Oster.
Oster and Lisa.
As the alternate, and Lisa Colby as the representative.
And Lisa Colby as a representative to the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District.
Second. Motion to amend and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's your care? Executive session?
Make a motion, we go to executive session to discuss personnel matter.
Second.
So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This will happen?
At the end.
After?
After.
Item 10.
Yep.
Will there be any decisions made?
No, no.
Just so public numbers.
Managers report.
Couple of quick items. We, I told you last meeting, we had some damage done in our town forest with the undergrowth with four-wheelers. They gave me a sample signed of the state of Vermont. We have purchased the duplicate with the Westminster lands on it to advertise that there is no traveling with ATVs in our town forests. So they'll be in this material, but they will be red with white lettering. Delinquent tax update, we went from almost 30 properties, now we're down to 13 that have been given to legal counsel for tax sale progression, and typically, out of that, I can see four or five more paying up and getting off that list. So we've, we've done, it's a normal year. Typically, we, we come in with that many. So it's a, it's been, it's been okay. Last one is the planning commission had the Zoom event on April 26, and 36 attendees, of which 24 were residents. If you weren't, if unable, if you were unable to attend, we do have the maps at the town hall and at the Westminster West School, so that you can read the directions and fill out the map for about two weeks more. So if you weren't able to make the event, and you're still interested in making your contribution to the, the planning event that was going on, then please, you have two weeks to get ahold of myself at the town hall, or go to the Westminster West School and follow the directions and fill it out. That's it.
Russ, just add, you can also do that online, so the postcard.
I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, you can.
You can, you can do it online also.
So the postcard is ever sent out, if you go to that website, I'm going to like to do it online.
Thank you.
Thank you. Words admitted.
In your package, you have the official letter from Bobby Kilburn. I do need a motion to accept her resignation.
Second.
Motion to accept the resignation of Bobby Kilburn, that's been approved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's your care?
Excuse me?
You put them in our package, though, because that is.
Yeah, that's under other business.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Other business.
Anything else on the boards of commissioners?
No.
Okay, other business.
In your package, it came in late, we have a cemetery deed request, it is in your packet, and I do need a motion to accept it if you so choose.
Motion, the name is seconded.
Does this person have a name? Is deceased name, is here somewhere?
I always say I've never seen one that doesn't have a name.
Someone's supposed to be, must be a woman, says her heirs and assigns forever.
Sorry, she didn't fill it out, and I don't know who it is off the top of my head.
Can we, I've never seen one do one without a name.
I'll, I'll have it changed if he signs it, but we've never turned down a, a purchase of a grade marking, so I would hope that we, we would prove this and have the, the name put into the, into the document before Kevin signs it.
Well, it's just, I don't want to be a hyper, hyper technical, but should we change? And then before we, it is a legal document, before we move forward on it, we are conveying a plot, so why don't we have the document corrected, and then for the next, unless there's something, is there something pending?
There is.
Okay.
This person has passed, and then there is.
My apologies, so, okay, so let's proceed then. With, so what's, a motion has been made, seconded, that the town of Westminster will be conveying, and you don't have a name?
I don't know what this, I'm sorry.
amend the motion.
Pending the amending of the motion, that the deceased name will be obtained, conveying section E, grade 40, in Westminster Cemetery. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's your care?
Thank you, sorry about that.
This time, we move to executive session?
Okay, let's do data.
Okay, there's no, sorry, public. Data next meeting will be May 12, and we'll be resuming back to Zoom.
6:30 and Zoom?
And Zooming? Yes.
I'm asking, I'm not telling you.
No, it's a good lesson.
Why would we do that when we're here right now? What's the difference between then and now?
Okay, so Jason thinks it's okay to stay?
I'm personally kidding, but I like the Zoom meetings.
Well, I would assume that we would meet here in person, but there's a Zoom opportunity if people don't feel comfortable.
Okay, so the same venue for May 12?
That's what I'm thinking, yes.
Okay, so May 12, we will, the venue, public, will be here, and Zoom will be available to everyone.
Not that stuff to the mix, but do you accept a, a board member Zooming?
No, I'll, I'll come.
Just asking.
Okay.
They have a right to, they have a right to, I don't, I wouldn't think so. Yeah, yeah, we used to have that, you'd see on the phone all the time, absolutely, one person called in.
We still have to see a person.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, thank you, public.